Court Orchard City Council, regular meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are at Citizens' Comments, at our first Citizens' Comment period. If you'd like to be recognized, just raise your hand and step to the microphone. Mr. Mahaney, you want to go first? Okay. Sharon King.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As most of you know, Port Orchard has not had a carnival on the waterfront since 2008. And in May of 2015, we had a petition during our Pirates' Rendezvous where we gathered up ten pages. I only printed out ten pages, but we gathered ten full pages of names, phone numbers, and email addresses. I'd like to say I have 10,000 signatures for you, but I only have 200 because we ran out of pages. But we have been in communication with Butler Amusements out of California about bringing their carnival to Port Orchard. We made contact with the Washington manager, Bob Merton, and Helene and I drove to Port Angeles where the carnival was set up on a particular weekend so that we could meet and talk with Bob, as well as over to Federal Way when the carnival was over there. And we took some pictures of which Helene just distributed to you. I tried to print out as many as I could. They're small, but what the pictures do show you is the carnival itself. It doesn't have the big rides because these were smaller carnivals, whereas on our waterfront, we can have a couple of bigger rides. It shows you how they anchor things down, they tape things down. They've also got benches scattered throughout the carnival so that parents can sit down on a bench, or you can eat, sit down on a bench while your kids are riding on a ride. The carnival itself was very clean. We were extremely impressed with his whole layout of what he had. And Bob stated that he has very strict rules for all of his employees and that they are one of the cleanest carnivals in Washington, as well as around the Northwest. I have spoken to the owner of the company, as well as we have received a certificate of insurance naming the Port of Bremerton, the City of Port Orchard, Fathoms of Fun Festival, and Town Square as additional insured. Their umbrella liability policy is $4 million. The dates they would like to come would be to set up on May 10th and 11th, with opening on May 12th, running through May 15th, and teardown on 516 on the waterfront. And Al's going to share with you the results of the survey and the area on the waterfront where it's typically been in the past. We have asked them to consider coming back for 2017 either on Parade Week or the Fourth of July Week. Those were what we wanted this year, but we missed that window of opportunity. The Fourth of July was originally available, but we missed the opportunity. So as a means of getting our foot in the door for 2016, they offered to come in May. So I would like Al to come speak next on the survey results. So, and I think you've all got a copy of those. Did you give them a copy?
Yes.
Okay. So we would ask for your support in bringing back the carnival.
Mr. Mahaney.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Al Mahaney. I'm with Fathoms of Fun Organization. I did a survey of 55 of our businesses in downtown, running from the Thai Restaurant all the way down to the Carpet on this end of town, Carpet Place, both sides of the road, and all the businesses in between. There's 55 businesses there. Forty-four of them responded. I have two of them, they're bail bondsmen I could never get ahold of. Glad I didn't need them. One of the businesses is closing, so they didn't put one in. We have one that's temporarily closed due to a death in their family. And there are three that are only open on weekends. But I did get 44 others. I have all the originals, and you should have copies thereof them, ranging from, let it, you know, do it, let's go for it, let's do a lot of things. I think that one of the most important ones is Amy's, from Amy's on the Bay. We had two options of the parking lot. One was the black shaded area, which is the normal parking lot from the gazebo, gazebo over in front of Amy's. The second option takes the last two rows, marked over for the last two rows to increase to add a couple more rides in there. Amy's, from Amy's on the Bay, said, "Might as well take up the whole parking lot and have extra rides and amusements for booze. If people want to be down here, they will find a way. Would recommend a shuttle bus if logistics can be figured out. Look forward to the return of the carnival. I've always been a supporter of it, and it's time for preo tradition, enhance their small-town independent celebration. Thanks, Amy Creed." Several of those are all for it. A lot of them just marked A or B, and there's a couple negatives, and there always will be a couple negatives, and no matter which small town you're in. Also, if anybody has any questions of these, please ask, and I'll let you know. I'll tell you about them. Also, with the carnival coming, we will be, have security, the portable toilets and cleaning during the event, waste dumpsters, make sure we get the permits and everything. It's a 50/50 split with the carnival company. So we'll stay close and on top of everything that we have going here. Does anyone have any questions about the survey or anything like that? Yes, Fred?
Can you explain what option B meant when it was use of all the parking area?
All the parking area was the, you have a shaded area on your map there. That's option A. And then you have a clear area that shows two rows of parking, which is option B, and that's the whole parking area. So that's all the way from the gazebo to the library in the parking lot, the back of the library, if you look at, if you want to look at the whole lot that way. I see the flash tonight.
Well, and the next step is going to be this, you're going to provide a public events application?
Correct.
Which staff and the fire department will process, and then the council will vote on it, you know, after it's passed through those steps.
Right, and that's, this is what we're doing right now, is getting everything ready to you guys so you know.
Perfect.
So I'm going to step down, and I'm going to have Helene step up, so she can let you know what happened at the carnival, unless anybody has any more questions.
Good evening, and I'm Helene Jensen, also part of Fathoms of Fun. And basically, what my job is to, is to reiterate what a great carnival this is. We actually did, like she said, go to two different times to the carnival. The thing that I was so impressed about was even, too, the cords that plug into all the rides. They were all neatly lined up without being all greasy and gross. They were all covered up, so there wasn't any chance of tripping easily for strollers to go across them, so it was extremely kid-friendly. Even the staff was extremely polite. I don't know if you've been in the past to carnivals, and young girls go there, and the guys are basically picking up on the girls. This is not the case of that at all. These are really well-mannered, well-groomed individuals running a really legit carnival. So out of all the different carnivals we've looked at, this one really is a first-class carnival. So that's basically all I was trying to do, is reel you guys in to say, "Yes, because we know this is a great carnival." So that's all.
You have one more comment. Now, make it real quick. They train their own bunkhouses and all their own stuff, so all their people travel with them all the time, do not pick up off the street and work for it for a couple days.
They also park them in fake showers. That's true. They want them all showered and much shaved and everything.
Thank you. Ms. Whittleton, you raised your hand, I believe?
Good evening. Alyssa Whittleton. I just wanted to provide some feedback. I want to thank Mayor Petansu, because I assume you are the one that directed code enforcement to get ahold of me regarding the derelict buildings around my neighborhood.
I, wasn't, wasn't me, but I think...
If you didn't, somebody did. Oh, thank you. I appreciate that very much. And I talked with him, and we came to consensus of the different buildings, and there was one in particular he didn't know about, and he went that day, checked it out, and he's working on it now, which I really appreciate. And also, I also wanted to compliment the Economic Development Council, because they made a special effort to make sure that they were going to provide public outreach for an upcoming public hearing. The outreach is beyond what is required, and I thought that was really commendable. So I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to provide comment this evening?
Bobby Stewart, President of the Bay Street Association. I wanted to just invite the council to come down for our Valentine's special that we're having downtown, and I have managed to talk in about 20 merchants to give a free raffle, so you can walk around town and put your name in for the raffle, and have a good time, and shop local. It runs from tomorrow on through Sunday. Best do that before Sunday, because nobody is open on Sunday. But other than that, we have even talked Fred, the Bike Man, into having a Valentine basket, which is a miracle in itself. So we'd just like you to join us.
Wonderful. Thank you for the information, Bobby. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
I can bring up a problem.
Absolutely. State your name for the record, and you've got three minutes.
I've never done this before. My name is Tom Bradley. I live at 1121 Tacoma Avenue. We're having a problem with our storm drain system in that area. The drains pick up water along Tacoma Street and Milcher Avenue, and dump it into a channel that runs down the middle between Tacoma and Portland Avenue. Eight years ago, well, here, I have a map that might show you.
Give it to the clerk there. Randy will take care of you.
About eight years ago, when I moved there, when the storms came through, the storm drain dumped in that channel, the water would run through, and only an extremely heavy rain put it back up into some of the yards along there. In the past eight years, though, part of the channels has started becoming plugged with debris, several pictures, with debris, and people filled in things like that, causing the water to back up even more. When it backs up now, it can be two or three days before it'll finally all run out. I did some research on the Internet and found Port Orchard's Storm Drain Design Manual, and in section 5.5.7, it states, "For open channels, all open channels are not recommended through residential lots, particularly at the rear of lots away from the street. Channels in these locations are very difficult to access for maintenance and lend to misuse or alteration by property owners. City prefers that open channels be located in right-of-ways or in open spaces where possible. If storm drains must be conveyed through individual lots, residential lots, it should be piped." I talked to Zach Colt, who is the Storm Drain or Stormwater System Manager for Port Orchard. He came out, looked at the problem, and said, "Yes, you do have a problem, but there's, he can't do anything because it's all on private property." He said, "I should come to the City Council and talk to you if I, to get something done." My thought is that since the city's storm drains are dumping into this channel, running down the middle of the block, through all this private property, that the city needs to either maintain the channel to where it doesn't get all backed up and plugged up in floodlots, or they should put in a pipe to convey it through there.
If you leave your information with the clerk, I'm sure Mr. Dorsey would be happy to research what the options are, and, well, I'm sure we'll be getting in touch with you. Okay. Potentially, the, something that the Utility Committee can look at after you've made some recommendations. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to have come?
Jerry Harmon, and you've been talking about ways to get information out to the community when things are new to the council. And today, we have some property in Shelton and on Pickering Road. Mason County has put up two of the movable, the blinking, or not, they're not blinking, but they have a message on it that they're having a discussion on the speed on Pickering on February 11th. And I just thought that that, and it's in two directions, so people coming out to the highway and in both see that. And I thought it was a very neat way to get a lot of people informed, because everybody that goes down the road gets to see it. And so if there are things that you want to get out to the community, it wouldn't be there all the time. It's just moved in for when you want it, and then it's moved out. And I don't know if we have those devices, but it sure was nice to know that I have a meeting to go to this week, so, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I don't believe we have those devices, but I'm sure Mark would love to have that in his arsenal.
I've talked to him a few times, but still there is...
Yes, remember that.
Anyone else wishing to comment this evening? Okay, there's another comment period at the end of the meeting this evening. We'll move on to our agenda. Is there anyone wishing to amend the agenda this evening? Mr. Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that Item E come off the consent agenda and be put into the business items.
Okay, so that would be Item J, then? E is now J on business items. Okay, is there a second of that?
Second, because that was my first.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to move Item E to, of the consent agenda, to Item J of the business items, which is the adoption of a resolution appealing in establishing committee assignments and responsibilities. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any other amendments to the agenda? A motion to approve the agenda.
I would move to approve it as amended.
Second it.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda has been approved. A motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
And a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are on to presentation. Unfortunately, Leslie Reynolds Taylor got ahold of us this afternoon, and we're going to reschedule that presentation on the Sinclair Thunderboats. So we are on to business items. We are on to Business Items 7A, a resolution of support of the funding cycle application process for the Tremont Widening Gateway Project. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution declares a intent to add a Tremont Street widening gateway project using grant proceeds, general obligation bond financing, and city street funds. On April 28, 2009, the Port Orchard City Council adopted Resolution 040-09, thereby supporting the 2011-2013 funding cycle for the Tremont Street Widening Gateway Project. This priority city transportation project has been immediately ready-to-go for several years, is currently listed as the number-one project on the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council's contingency list, and requires obligation of necessary construction funding prior to September 2018. The city, acting through its Public Works Department, will seek grant funding by submitting a county-wide funding application with the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council, a regional funding application with the Puget Sound Regional Council, and a state funding application with the Transportation Improvement Board, seeking grant funding within the 2017-2020 funding cycle. For municipal purposes, the city may issue bonds within constitutional and statutory limitations, not exceeding one and one-half percentum of the taxable property of the city, without assent of three-fifths of the voters, and with such assent statutorily limited to a total indebtedness of two and a half percent of the value of the taxable property. Current assessed valuation of $1 million, or $1,405,166,175, provides for non-voted debt capacity of $21,077,175, and voted general debt capacity of $35,129,154, less any outstanding debt. It is the city's intent to use bond proceeds in combination with grant funds to complete the project. In order to reimburse the city street fund for project costs paid prior to the issuance of general obligation bonds, the city treasurer, acting as the official authorized on behalf of the city, will execute a declaration of official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of bonds pursuant, of bonds pursuant to Treasury Regulation 1.150-2, as it may be amended or superseded, and Port Orchard Resolution Number 030-13 for the Tremont Street Widening Gateway Project. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt Resolution 011-16, thereby supporting the 2017-2020 state and federal funding cycle application process for the Tremont Street Widening Gateway Project as a requirement to obtain grant funding for a, for a fully-funded
Mr. Corley.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 011-16, thereby supporting the 2017 to 2020 state and federal funding cycle application process for the Tremont Street Widening Gateway Project as a requirement to obtain grant funding for a fully-funded project.
Second it.
Motion and a second, is there discussion? Mr. Clausen.
Mark, I see that you're going for the 2017-2020 funding cycle, but I was under the impression from PSRC that there might be some funding that is available sooner.
No, the, the 2016 applications, which will be submitted this spring, are obligated in 2018. They went through the, they went to that three and four-year, so they're obligating future years. So the applications we're putting forth right now are for the 2018 cycle.
Okay. But I thought there was some funding that might be available. I don't know if it was left to work on some other projects or what.
We, KRCC, not PSRC, had, I guess for the, it was $800,000-ish, and it was dribs and drabs from years. It wasn't enough to allow us to obligate a fully-funded project for Tremont.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Mr. Shane.
I appreciate the paragraph telling us about our assessed valuation, both voted and non-voted, in the range of $21 and $35 million. What portion of this project is it likely to cost of that amount? For example, would it be 50% of our debt capacity, do you think?
I, well, I'll jump in first. So I know that the city, as I said in the staff report, is optimistic and is going to diligently pursue not only county-wide funding this year, but regional funding, and we've already had conversations with the Transportation Improvement Board. I would probably be unwise to establish that I think I can get 50% or 80%. I'm, you know, I'm going to get as much as we can get. I think it could range anywhere from 50 to 80% in the grant process, based on initial feedback. But, you know, a, a application competition is, emphasis is the word competition, so it really depends on how many, I think there are five regional projects, filling up six of our regional slots. That's the first time that we've had more than two, I think, since 2008, since I've been here. The regional application is always competitive, and so is the TIB. So I think the impetus of this presentation really is to adopt a resolution to attach to the KRCC, PSRC, and TIB applications, to say that we are fully funded, and that number is unknown at this time, and that we will diligently seek that. But we're really talking about the delta, that the bonds will only be required to backfill anything that we're unsuccessful in the grants. But knowing that September of 2018 is, is a hard deadline, this is really, you know, we're, we're up against it, so.
I don't think you directly answered your question. So the, the funding shortfall, based on the percentages it's giving, is probably in the neighborhood of five, five to eight million dollars.
Okay.
And our capacity, non-voted is 21, and voted is 35 million. We shouldn't be anywhere near either one of those numbers.
So worst-case scenarios, we would have to pay, or fund eight million?
Yeah, that would, 50% shortfall would be...
Yeah, worst-case scenarios, we have to bond all of it.
All of it. That would be the all of it, yeah, none of our application, yeah. If, if we didn't get any of the grants, and we didn't get any other assistance, that, yeah, worst case could...
But then that kind of nullifies this resolution, because this is saying we're fully funded, so please give us money. If we didn't get any money, then we'd be having another conversation.
Yeah. True.
Talking at somewhere between zero and 18 million.
I think the other thing that's important is to be able to get into this competition, you need to show that we're willing to fund whatever that shortfall is, and that's essentially what this document will do.
Right, and just a reminder that even if we didn't do this project, we would be on the owing end of about 3.25 million. Is that accurate? And have nothing to show for it.
It's a nice drawing.
Nice drawings.
Any other discussion or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We are on 27B, Adoption of a Resolution Approving a Contract with KPG Inc. for 2016 PSRC Regional and KRCC Countywide Application and Procurement Procedure Documentation. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, and this is obviously associated with the previous item. The City of Port Orchard Public Works Department has been working diligently over the years to procure construction funding for the Immediately Ready-to-Go Tremont Street Widening Project. For the 2016 funding cycles, along with applying for state grant funding with the Transportation Improvement Board later this summer, the city will also apply to both the Puget Sound Regional Council, Regional, and the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council countywide for federal grant funding. The need to have a viable and regionally competitive grant application is paramount. On January 27, 2016, the city's Public Works Department issued a request for qualification to three professional services firms listed on the current city's professional services roster. By the February 2, 2016 deadline, staff received two responses. As documented by the attached resolution, KPG Inc. was determined to be the most qualified professional services firm. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt Resolution 012-16, thereby approving contract 017-16 with KPG Inc. in the amount not to exceed $5,000 for the 2016 PSRC Regional and the KRCC Countywide Application Process and documenting the professional services procurement procedures pursuant to RCW 39.80.
I would move to adopt Resolution Number 012-16, thereby approving contract number C017-16 with KPG Inc. in the amount not to exceed $5,000 for the 2016 PSRC Regional and the KRCC Countywide Application Process and documenting the professional services procurement procedures pursuant to RCW 39.80.
Second it.
Motion and a second. Discussion. I would like to add that I've had conversation with our lobbyist and PSRC staff both, and they've indicated very strongly to us, to me, that this is money well-spent, and we can get millions of dollars, and have a much better application process by having a professionally prepared grant application, so. Mr. Clausen?
Just a question, Mark. You know who's the principal's going to be on this project?
Olivia Barat and...
Terry Wright.
Questions or comments?
Have we worked with KPG before?
I've worked with K, both, I think Nick and I have worked with KPG in our previous lives, and in reviewing, and both Olivia and Kelly, Terry, in reviewing their proposal, they've got extensive and successful application, regional applications that they've been successful for numerous projects, probably primarily in the south Puget Sound area, but... for numerous projects, probably primarily in the south Puget Sound area, but, you know, they've had success in writing these applications. And we've already met with PSRC staff, we had a conference call, they provided feedback as they would any applicant, and we've taken those notes and we've passed those along. So, I guess I feel fairly confident that between TIB, PSRC, and KRCC, we should hopefully get some grant funding for this project and get it behind us so we can move on to the Bethel Corridor and other projects.
Scott.
I think it's extremely wise spending, you can't get a bigger bang for your buck than this, and it's the right thing to do for grant funding.
Thank you. Mr. Klaassen.
Mark, is this agreement going to help with preparing a presentation, so when you vote before PSRC?
Yeah, the, the scope is to work with PSRC staff, use their complete database on graphics, generate population numbers, everything that's available, and even knowing how to use their library of information is critical. And then preparing the application and then supporting the city in that application presentation.
Nice. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. You're on to 7C, Adoption of a Resolution Approving a Contract with Robinson Noble Inc. for the 2016 Hydrogeological Services Water Rights and Procurement Procedure Documentation. Say that one five times fast. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you. The City of Port Orchard has utilized Robinson Noble for professional hydrogeologic services since 2003. In 2015, Robinson Noble Inc. prepared a water rights planning report for tasks to be performed in the 2016-2017 budget years. That was contract 041-15. This contract serves as an initial task associated with this report and the city's overall water rights program with the procurement procedures consistent with RCW 39.80. Robinson Noble Incorporated, as documented by the attached resolution, was determined to be the most qualified professional services firm. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt Resolution 009-16, thereby approving contract 015-16 with Robinson Noble in an amount not to exceed $8,000 for the 2016 Hydrogeologic Services Water Rights Alternative Study and documenting the professional services procurement procedures pursuant to RCW 39.80.
Your motion.
Sure.
Second.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 009-16, thereby approving contract number C015-16 with Robinson Noble Inc. in an amount not to exceed $8,000 for the 2016 Hydrogeologic Services Water Rights Alternative Study and documenting the professional services procurement procedures pursuant to RCW 39.80.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion in this item? Mr. Currall.
So, I'm wondering just a little bit, I'm sure this is probably something that would have been discussed in utilities, but I was reading the letter from Robinson Noble, Mike Krautkammer, Kramer, and in it, he was talking about this study possibly revealing that a different well, other than well number 10, might be the source of Port Orchard water in the future. It's something I don't, I don't remember hearing about, but maybe it's been in the works for a while. Is that actually, is that the intent of this study, to check out the possibility of a different well other than well 10, taking Port Orchard into the future?
Yes. The, when you're on a path, and in 2008, when I came to the city, I questioned the well 10 location, and at that time, between local tribal policy, between groundwater, or the lack of groundwater studies, and really with the urban growth boundary issues not really brought to the forefront, even though I tried to look financially and strategically that maybe the current well 10 site isn't the best site for the future source, but that it would still be there as a secondary source, the city moved ahead with securing the $6 million loan to move ahead with the well 10 project. With changes in tribal policy, changes in the fact that we now have a groundwater study that we've been funding for the last five years as a partner with the PUD, and with some recent revelation that's come out of the UGA conversations, it was, it's prudent that we utilize a very small portion of the funding that we allocated for water rights in 2016. I think we have almost $100,000 programmed to utilize a very small amount of that to take one last look in answering numerous questions as to, is that truly where it should be? And if it isn't, does it make financial sense, strategic sense, to look at an alternative? And only if every one of those answers to those questions come back yes, would the Public Works Department, Department bring forth a proposal to move ahead with changing the location.
Could we actually still make use of those funds for a different well other than well 10, or would we have to go, move forward with well 10 and the drilling and everything?
One of the primary questions that we'll be asking would be the current $6 million loan, if the answers, it's like a four-tran program. If we went through that if-then-do loop, and we continued through saying, yep, go to the next line, go to the next line, if everything worked out perfectly, and it came down to the Department of Health and the DWSRF, the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund said, yes, we will allow you to drill a new well and, and have a water source that delivers water from gravity rather than wheeling it up with pumps, if they say, you know, we'll just move this money and we'll program it in the future, and if that project actually costs less, then yes, I think I would be providing a disservice to the city to just keep moving ahead on a path, rather than taking one last, one last look. And so, that's what we're doing right now, is we have a series of strategic questions and meetings, and this is the key part of it. And like I said, it's only if that four-tran loop doesn't crash, will I be coming back through the Utility Committee, through the Council, to say, you know what, we were forced to drill a well in a location that really wasn't that great, and we have an opportunity to, to have a better source for the future. But if I don't get a yes in all those questions, then we'll continue with what we're doing.
So, that would affect the, the main, the main running up and down the street, and the improvements on the street above well number 10?
Are you talking about Perry Avenue?
Yes.
If we move the location, then Perry Avenue would become a road and drainage project, because we've already developed a certain level of surveying plans, so I would roll that into a road and street project.
Big changes, possibly. Do you have an idea of how much we've invested in well 10, period of four?
I think we know exactly. 1.1 million.
We're not over a million dollars yet.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're 800, 900,000 to date on that project. But again, we would only move to a different location if it financially was a savings in the long run, and the will, the well would still be there for the next, next, next generation. It's, we wouldn't abandon the well.
So, we would retain the, the water rights there, we would not have to shift them to a new location? Is that how that works?
We have plenty of water rights that we could maintain both.
Okay, thank you. It was just new information?
Right, it wasn't really ready to go public yet, but we've gone public, so.
Other questions?
No, I would just comment that I appreciate the due diligence to make sure that when we're spending the public's money, that we're doing it in the most efficient and prudent manner. So, I think that this study is appropriate, and thank you for pursuing it, Mark.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. You're on to Item 7D, Adoption of a Resolution Approving a Contract with Pace Engineers Inc. for the 2016 Regional Decant retrofit, construction, administration, and procurement procedure documentation. Mr. Dorsey.
This is my last one for the night. Okay, so, the City of Port Orchard Public Works Department is in the process of constructing a new regional decant facility via retrofit of the existing aging and undersized facility using grant fundy, funding awarded by the Department of Ecology. The city previously, was previously awarded a design contract to bring the existing decant facility into compliance with stormwater standards to Pace Engineers. Now that the design is complete and approved by Ecology, and the construction phase is scheduled to commence in early to mid 2016, the city will need to acquire construction and administration and inspection services to successfully complete the project. On January 7, 2016, the city's Public Works Department issued a request for qualification to eight professional services firms listed on the city's professional services roster. By the January 15, 2016 deadline, staff received two responses. As documented by the attached resolution, Pace Engineers was determined to be the most qualified professional services firm. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt Resolution 010-16, thereby approving contract 016-16 with Pace Engineers Inc. in the amount not to exceed $125,000 for the 2016 Regional Decant Facility retrofit expansion, construction administration, and inspection services and documenting professional services procurement procedures pursuant to RCW 39.80. And I would note that this funding does come out of the grant funding.
Your motion. Mr. Chang.
We could read every other word. I move to adopt Resolution Number 010-16, thereby approving contract number C016-16 with Pace Engineers Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $125,000 for the 2016 Regional Decant Facility retrofit expansion, construction administration, and inspection services and documenting the professional services procurement procedures pursuant to RCW 39.80.
Second.
The motion and a second, any discussion? Will be voting on the adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Pace Engineers for the 2016 Regional Decant retrofit construction administration procurement procedure documentation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. We are on to Item 7E, Approval and Agreement with Kitsap County Prosecuting Attorney's Office to Serve as Housing Kitsap Legal Counsel and Waver of Any Potential Conflicts of Interest. I'll read the staff report. So, Housing Kitsap no longer has, has council representation. The Board of Directors of Housing Kitsap, Kitsap wishes to enter into an agreement with the Kitsap County Prosecuting Office for General Counsel. Before Kitsap County Prosecuting's office can provide such services, they are seeking approval from Housing Kitsap, from Housing Kitsap each city and county to consent to legal services and to waive any conflict of interest that may be said to arise by virtue of that reservation. Recommendation is to approve the agreement as presented. I'll have you know that our new legal counsel has reviewed this document, and we didn't have a problem with it.
I move to direct the mayor to execute an agreement with the Kitsap County Prosecuting Attorney's Services for Housing Kitsap's legal counsel as presented.
Second.
Just additional information on this, so, the, they fired their legal counsel, looking for the best option they could find, and it's a six-month agreement to try this out with Kitsap County, and it provides significant savings to the housing authority for their legal services, so, that's what's driving this.
So, they reimburse the Kitsap County?
They're going to pay for a half-time attorney up at, up at the county, is how this is, this is, the agreement's going to work.
Okay, thank you.
I would just make the comment that KRCC also contracts with the Kitsap County Prosecuting Attorney's Office for our legal work, and we gave a bit of due diligence to make sure that there is a definite separation within the prosecuting attorney's office when they're working for the county as to when they're working for KRCC. So, I've been through a process that has vetted that significantly, and so I'm comfortable supporting this.
Your comments?
Thank you.
Seeing none, will be voting on approval and of agreement with Kitsap County Prosecuting Attorney's Office to serve as Housing Kitsap Legal Counsel and waiver of any potential conflicts of interest. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. All right, we are on to 7F. And this is a, an approval of a contract with Lighthouse Law Group, PLLC, for attorney services, and, you're going to make me read all this, huh? Port Orchard Municipal Code 2.08, Appointed Officers, provides that the mayor may appoint the city attorney and enter into a professional services contract with a law firm or an individual upon agreement by the mayor and confirmation by the majority of the city council. As discussed in the December 8, 2015 council meeting, a request for proposals for the city attorney services was issued and was due January 8. Ten proposals were received. After reviewing the proposals, four applicants were asked to interview with the city on January 20, 2016. The interview panel consisted of Mayor Putansu, Councilmember Ashby, Councilmember Kachardi, Treasurer Martin, Public Works Director Dorsey, and Development Director Bond interviewed the four applicants. At the January 26, 2016 council meeting, the council confirmed the mayor's appointment of Lighthouse Law Group, PLLC, and the city attorney, with the understanding that the mayor would bring back to council a contract for legal services. The contract has been negotiated and been provided to the council for consideration. He gave me 60 days, and I got it done in two weeks, so. Motion.
It is my pleasure to move to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Lighthouse Law Group, PLLC, for city attorney legal services as presented.
Second.
The motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seeing none? Congratulations. Okay, we are to 7G, Approval of the January 19, 2016 Council Work Study Minutes.
Move to approve.
Second. Since they're on the business items, is someone abstaining?
I would, I would like to actually vote on this, because I watched the tape.
Okay.
So, if, if everyone's in favor, I read the minutes and find it.
Morgan, welcome too. So, we will be voting on the approval of the January 19, 2016 council?
Could we have a discussion?
Yeah, we may.
Okay, on page two, paragraph four, I'm not sure if this is represented correctly. Councilmember Chang voices concerns, asking what the city's motivation is for wanting to reduce our UGA. Is that the city's motivation, or was it the county's motivation? And I thought all along this was framed as county's motivation for...
Yes, I believe that would be.
Okay, so I'd make a motion to correct that statement, exchanging city for county, cities for counties' motivation.
So, yes, but we're, this is an, you're asking, asking for an amendment, so we have a motion to amend the minutes, and you, and we need a second.
I'll second.
So, motion a second on that amendment. Any discussion of the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor, vote, voting for the amended minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Now, we will, so that motion to amend the minutes has passed. Now we will, so that motion to amend the minutes has passed, now we will be voting to approve the January 19th, 2016 council study session minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are to item seven H, which is a discussion of the council retreat facilitator. I just wanted to let you know that we have, I've got three proposals. We have roughly $1,500 in the budget, but we could tap some other funds if you wanted to exceed that amount. We had $3,000 in training, and roughly $1,500 is going to get used for the Jurassic Parliament, and so we had another roughly $1,500 to use for our retreat. I've got a proposal from The Greatness Within, and it's a TJ Housington. He typically, he's, his company does motivational type speaking, I would suspect, is primarily what they do. He's, there would be a team-building component to his proposal. He normally charges $9,500 to $14,000 for his programs. He would do this at a discount to us for $3,600. The second proposal I have is from a firm called Gatehouse, and it's called the Discovery Program. A local resident, Craig Elkins, that I happen to know, and I think Mr. Kuchardi knows, and he's, he norm, and he has a similar program to the other individual. It would be some team-building to it, and then we would go into our goals-setting and so forth. He normally charges $6,000, and he would discount his services to us for $2,500. The third proposal I had, I got, was from Triangle, and they are our KRCC facilitator, and they have the contract for that. And Claire Chase would be performing our retreat, or be the facilitator for our retreat. It would be basically a bare-bones, goal-setting agenda. There isn't any team-building aspect to it, and the price was $1,317. So I just wanted to try to get some consensus, what it is, it's your money too, in your budget, and what the, what you would prefer to have.
I would throw my two cents in, and I like two cents, so I think, you know, the $1,300 facilitation would work well. I think they, like, I hope the goal of this is to come to consensus on what the goals are going to be for the city as we move forward. And I've sung kumbaya many, many times before, and I could probably lead us in that if necessary.
Mr. Deener.
So my three cents, I believe we ought to go with the $1,300 and change. I question the value of team-building for a group like us, when our team-building is really, our teammanship, if you will, is really limited to being right here. I think the Jurassic Training might be more along the lines of what we need for team-building, but I think I'm with John that we go with the $1,300 one.
Any other comments on?
No, I would just say that I have had the pleasure of working with Triangle Associates with their principal, Betsy Daniels, and with Claire, and they would all do a good job, and I believe meet our needs. They facilitated the KRCC retreat last summer and did a fine job.
I'm confident that they'll do a good job too, it's just there was differences in the scope, and if we wanted to do something more, I'd, we'd find a way to make that happen. So I will get with the clerk, and we'll move forward with putting together a contract with Triangle Associates then.
And I would recommend if the council would entertain a motion to approve that contract with a maximum dollar amount, just because we won't have a regular council meeting before the retreat for the mayor to take action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Triangle to facilitate our council retreat with a budget not to exceed $1,500.
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second, any other discussion of the account, or the council retreat facilitator? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are on to item seven I, Discussion of Signage on SR16 Near Tremont and Old Clifton Road. Mr. Bond.
Thank you. Councilmembers, this was a late addition to the agenda that came out of the Economic Development Committee on, at their meeting on Monday, yesterday. And so we had received this proposal from WashDOT in mid-January after a December meeting with Alan Martin, Brianna Murray, and myself. We've been talking to WashDOT for more than a year about updating the signage through the city as a way to identify how to get to Port Orchard City Center, and also just to better recognize Port Orchard from the freeway. The Economic Development Committee felt very strongly about the westbound signage, which is SR16 heading towards Gorst from Tacoma, and they felt that the eastbound signage, if there was enough funding, would be something that they would be interested in as well, and just wanted to get the full council opinion. And as far as staff recommendations go, I've talked to Alan and Mark, and we both feel that this is a pretty good investment, and I think Alan can probably add on to that. And I would also note that in our budget for 2016, we have a line item for signage replacement and repair, and so this could come out of that budget. The price for the two proposals, it's $8,500 for just doing the westbound SR16 signs as shown on the map. If you add the eastbound signs, it's a total of $17,000 for all, for our eight signs. And Alan, I don't know if you want to add, or possibly the committee chair.
Well, I'll just take a moment and make a compassionate plea for the signage in both directions. I think it's a good investment. As you know, I've driven into town here to participate and been very proud of it for about seven years now. And one of the things I hear people, because I don't live here like you all do, is I get asked, "How do you get downtown?", and I get asked, "How do you get out of downtown?". And so where you live here every day, we know it now, and I know it now, but where we're trying to bring people into the community, I think it's a real good investment to put the signs out on the road. WashDOT has a number of rules and regulations, federal regulations on signage, so when you sit down with them, we actually made two trips down to Olympia, starting back in 2001, working on this. And so first of all, they have their protocols, whether or not the signs even fit in that location. So the first hurdle you go through is to get to that level, and they did agree that the signage was more applicable out there to have this done. And so they, so it fit within those guidelines as well. So anyway, this is a good investment, I believe. It's going to help move people into town. When I started up here, it was 5,500 people, and we weren't quite as much on each side of the highway as we are now. So that all fits in this too. So I just really would ask the council to support this, so that we can help people find Port Orchard even better.
And to add to that, I stole two of Alan's photographs, and we went out and looked at all the signage that's out there now, and you'll notice that the word "Port Orchard" doesn't appear anywhere on the signs, and so this would correct that problem at the Tremont exit. Currently, the reference to Port Orchard is "Port Orchard Next Two Exits", which is about a mile south of the Sedgwick exit. And so when you actually get to the exit that would take you to downtown, you aren't really aware of that.
Mr. Mayor, the discussion in economic development yesterday morning was very supportive of the westbound signage. The committee, and the committee can chime in, was, the committee felt that complementary wayfinding signs were important down Tremont to direct people to the library, the courthouse, the high school. And we were not sure of the budget available, and we felt the westbound signs and the complementary wayfinding signs were what was critical to happen, but that we were also supportive of the eastbound signs if the rest of the council, you know, wanted to spend the money for that.
And I think what I've heard from the treasurer is, there's money for the directional signs as well as both directions. Mr. Kuchardi.
Was the expenses on that, does that include the Department of Transportation's installation fees?
That's perfect.
And then just a comment, I mean, I think it, to me personally, it makes no sense to only sign half of our freeways. I mean, there's people coming from both directions, and to say that we'd like to see this half find our city and the other half not find our city makes no sense. I'd rather complete one and then move to Phase Two with additional wayfinding, so I would definitely would rather support the option of having signage on both sides of the freeway.
Mr. Clausen.
You know, in most cases, I would agree with you, Sean. I guess the only thing that I would raise as an issue is that when people are coming south, if you will, or eastbound, however they want to direct it, the first opportunity that they're going to have to come to Port Orchard is actually coming on 166. And there's a lot of signage there, whether it's appropriate or not. The only thing that makes me lean in the direction that you were suggesting is the fact of the way signing. If in fact we do put that in on Tremont, then it would make sense to encourage people to come off there at Tremont. But from a traffic standpoint, is it really, do we want them off on Tremont, or do we want them to come in on 166? I don't know.
That's a good point.
And that was a discussion in economic development, but if they miss, if they don't get all the way to the left to get on 166, and they come up the hill, they need another option.
I just really like the idea of having Port Orchard City Center being highlighted at really both of those locations. I think it's a great thing.
Deener.
So I can understand the argument that you'll get more view hits as you go north on those signs, but I also think it's almost as equally important to have the signs going the other direction, so I'm in favor of both. And then maybe a question for staff, for those of us who don't understand DOT's funding obligations for signs, maybe you could help me and others understand why we have to pay for this.
They're the state of Washington, we're not. No, actually, that's, they put up a certain sign, they put up one, the first set of signs, I think they said, and then if you want additional signs, then they do it. I think that's how it works, but I don't really recall, but I did, we did ask them.
There's nothing inadequate about the current signs, and I think that's the issue. And so unless you guys each want to take a sign and take your car up there and maybe...
So we're essentially paying for an upgrade as well.
Well, I've been through this on a private sector side, and really, the main cost here, there's two costs. You're paying, we are paying to have the sign manufactured, and these signs are alarmingly huge, and you don't really realize how big these signs are as you're driving by at 60 miles an hour. And then we also pay the state to have them installed, and so those are really the two costs.
Yeah, and the thing that they told us about the signs is these are going to be bigger than what's there, and they require an extra support, and so it's a total new sign structure, not just the sheet metal sign.
Is this just a one-time charge? Do we pay maintenance or anything like that? No? And if the wind were to blow them down like you see along the corridor, do we pay for that expense?
We do not. We just pay for the sign, and they put it up, and then they'll maintain it. It is on there right away.
Right, the signs are WashDOT signs, built to their breakaway standards, windload standards. The signs that you've seen recently, based on some storms we've had, if you look at those, they were all probably put in 1990 or earlier wooden posts, so they were needing to be replaced with the new metal breakaway. So, yeah, it's their sign, they'll maintain it, wash it. The city's only responsible for secondary signage, but that's just secondary signage associated with, like, if somebody, like, you know, coming down to a restaurant, once you get off the freeway, the city then has to do those smaller secondary signages, anything that's on the state highway, but this wouldn't fall under that category.
And considering that there's going to be a great deal of growth out in that direction, I could see the need for that, and if that high school passes today, it will only be a matter of years where we'll be having people have that noted, that the high school is in that direction out there too. So we're growing.
I think it's important to have signs coming in both directions, because we have probably a lot more traffic coming from the Tacoma direction, but it makes no sense not to have a directional sign to our city center coming from other directions, from the, what is it, the south, east, whichever direction that is. And then, as Councilman Ashby said, equally important are the wayfinding signs to the city center once you get off the freeway. So I'd be in favor of all three.
So this is, Mr. Clausen.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize staff to move forward with options A and B with the state.
Second it.
So you got a motion and a second to move forward with options A and B. More discussion?
No, I needed to announce that I'm a DOT employee, and I don't benefit materially from this discussion, but I will recuse myself from the vote if anyone feels there's a conflict. I don't even know who the sign people are at DOT. We have 7,000 people in the agency, but being a member of DOT, if you feel I'm biased, I'll be happy to recuse myself from this.
Are you going to vote for or against, Fred?
Has anyone wished Mr. Chang to recuse himself this evening?
Yeah.
I don't see anyone, so I'm sorry, you have to vote with us. We will be voting on approving of option A and B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries.
I do want to thank you all for this. I've been working on this since I came up here, and actually, on the way to work, ended up in Gorst one morning, and told Nick Bond about that story one time, and he said he did the same thing. So, but anyway, thank you very much. I think this is a good thing, so.
You mean you missed the Tremont exit going north? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I almost went to Brimerton Motorsports.
All right. We are on to our new seven J, which is Adoption of a Resolution, Adoption of a Resolution Repealing, Resolution Number 001-14, in Establishing Council Committee Assignments and Responsibilities. Sir Reinsen.
Okay, so council members discussed reorganization of council committees during the January 26, 2016 special council meeting. Council directed the city clerk to prepare a resolution establishing the following committees. So there's the Finance Committee, who oversees the city's budgeting, financial planning, and fiscal reporting, recommends long-range financial goals along with the funding strategies for the operating and capital budgets, human resource issues requiring policy direction, serves as the advisory forum for transportation and street maintenance funding, and funding relating to the transportation benefit districts. And at that committee, it was discussed that the members would be council members Ashby, Clausen, and Kuchardi. The Land Use Committee, which is formerly known as Public Property, will investigate and recommends policy regarding city property, including parks, streets, alleys, and sidewalks. In addition, recommends policy on the city's comprehensive plan. And at that meeting, the members were to be council members Clausen, Kuchardi, and Deener. The Economic Development Tourism investigates and recommends policies on increasing economic development and business retention. Members at that time were to be council members Ashby, Chang, and Donlin. Utilities investigates and recommends policy on the subject and issues related to sewer, water, and stormwater. In addition, serves as city representatives to the Sewer Advisory Committee. At that time, members were council members Clausen, Deener, and Lucarelli. Sewer Advisory serves as the city's representatives in conjunction with the West Town Utility District Commissioners, and the members would be council members Clausen, Deener, and Lucarelli. Festival Chimes and Lights recommends activities and advertisements for the event. Members would be council member Lucarelli and Donlin. Lodging Tax Advisory is the chair, to chair the Committee of Hoteliers and Nonprofits to review lodging tax applications and provide a recommendation to the council for distribution. Members, the member/chair would be council member Chang. There was also some discussion of outside agency assignments, and at that meeting, they are assigned as followed. And I know that there was some discussions after the meeting based on, I think, other committee assignments, but I'll read as stated on the audio. So the Health District would be council member Clausen as the alternate. KRCC would be council member Ashby, with Donlin being... Member Clausen as the alternate. KRCC would be Council Member Ashby, with Donlin being the alternate. PSRC Executive Board would be Council Member Patanzu as the alternate. Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management, as an alternate, would be Council Member Deener. PSRC, Puget Sound Regional Coordinating EDD Economic, I'm not, executive, I'm not quite sure exactly what that one is. But it's the PSRC EDD, and the alternate would be Council Member Donlin. The KITA-KITA, Kitsap Economic Development Alliance, and the Kitsap Aerospace...
Defense Alliance.
Defense Alliance, would be Council Member Lucarelli, with Council Member Deener being the alternate. The PSRC Transpo would be Council Member Ashby. The KRCC Transpo would be Council Member Ashby, with Council Member Donlin being the alternate. And the PRTPO, Puget Regional Transportation Peninsula...
Regional.
...Executive Board, would be Council Member Ashby, with Council Member Patanzu being the alternate. Further, the council-directed council members would serve on the committee as outlined in the resolution. And staff, I believe, is going to be hearing some changes from council members. And I believe the changes that I had was that Council Member Deener would step aside and allow Council Member Donlin be on the Utilities and the Sewer Advisory Committee. Is that correct?
I don't believe that that's correct anymore.
Okay, then I'm wrong. Okay, so I will leave it up to the council to direct me as to what changes there are.
Okay, we'll make a motion here and then have some discussions. Mr. Clausen, you...
Well, I think this discussion, I want confirmation, I think the changes that we had discussed was, Mr. Chang expressed interest on the Utilities Committee, and I stepped off of the Utilities and accepted land use in place of. So at least that's how I remember it. Mr. Chang was going to serve both on Utilities and Sewer Advisory, and not me.
And then you were going to serve on land use, then?
So I would serve on land, which is...
He's already listed on there.
Correctly there. It's just that you have been listed way too many places. And the last thing is just for clarification, it's now Mayor Patanzu, not Council Member Patanzu.
Oh.
We promoted him.
My bad.
We knew what you meant.
Okay.
And then, there was some other discussion about, was there another committee that wasn't, needed clarification?
No, I think we had, we had some side discussions about, I think, Donlin and my role on various committees, and we worked that out. There's no changes.
Okay.
Fair enough. Mr. Clausen.
Mayor, I would move that we adopt a resolution, repealing Resolution Number 001-14, and establishing the council committee assigning responsibilities with the corrections that have been noted.
I would second that.
Motion and second for the council committee assignments, and all that...
I'm just going to say, as far as the PSRC assignments that we have here for alternates, that all has to be approved by KRCC. These are just our recommendations we're bringing forward from our city.
And I believe they have been approved.
Okay.
I was asked at the meeting, after the meeting. So I think we're good with what's there. But you are correct that it's outside our control whether or not these recommendations are approved. So we will be voting on and adopting a resolution, appealing Resolution Number 001-14, and establishing council committee assignments and responsibilities. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. We are to council, reports of council committees. Does any, have a, should we run down the list, or we just ask for those that have met?
Economic Development met yesterday.
You have a report?
Yesterday. And we established our standard meeting time will be the second Monday of the month at 9:00 a.m. here in council chambers. Our agenda consisted of the public event application and the processing for those. We've been working on that for some time. It continues to move forward. We had testimony at our meeting from the Fire Department, and they have asked us to consider adding special events to our application process, so that they are able to have some authority over larger events that are on private property. We heard a couple different ideas for managing the banner across Bay Street. And time is needed to vet these various options. In the meantime, the committee recommends limiting the immediate use to legacy banners. In other words, events and organizations who have historically hung banners will be allowed to do so while we develop the long-term solution. We also discussed the State Route 16 signage that was brought forward and voted on just a few moments ago. We discussed the sign code, and AWC is anticipated to issue a draft sign code within the next couple of months. And the Economic Development Committee will invite our local merchant organizations, the Chamber and the POBSA, to bring representation to our March meeting for any input the business community has on needs for signage, so that we're able to incorporate their needs into our new code. We had, we distributed the draft economic development element of our comp plan, so that our committee can become familiar with it. And the committee discussed goals for the next year and items to bring forward to the retreat. So that's what we did.
Mr. Clausen.
Mr. Mayor, first, I'd like to report that the school bond issue is 59.3% in favor of and 40.7% rejecting it. So I'm not sure if it...
Sixty percent, unfortunately. So hopefully...
Just a dish more.
Sure, there's a lot of voters the last couple days that haven't voted yet, or haven't been counted yet, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Clausen, do you have a report?
Yeah, the, well, not so much anything more than just to let the folks know that we have a land use committee scheduled for 7:30 a.m. on the 17th here. And we also have a finance committee scheduled for the 29th at 7:30 here.
Thank you for the update. Any other committees to report?
I do.
Yes, Mr. Lucarelli.
So the Utilities Committee will be meeting the third Monday of every month at 9:30 a.m. here in City Hall, in the Carolyn Powers Chamber Room. But there is an exception with the first meeting being February 22nd. And that will be here at City Hall at 9:30 a.m.
And I see also on the agenda that February 24th at 6:30 p.m. is the Sewer Advisory Committee meeting.
Right.
Also here at City Hall.
Yes.
Anything from LTAC?
No, they're not yet, thank goodness. But can you remind us when the Jurassic Parliament session is going to be?
Next Tuesday.
Next week.
Okay, at 6:00 a.m., I mean, 6:00 p.m.?
6:00 p.m.
Okay.
Special session for you at 6:00 a.m., but the rest of us will be here at 6:00.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that.
Okay. Any other committee reports? Report of the mayor. I want to let you know that I obtained a letter of support from Mr. Bruce Titus in support of our accelerated funding on the Bay Street pedestrian pathway. It's been given to our lobbyist. Some of our delegation was asking for that letter, and I was able to get that. So, secondly, just make you aware that there's, the date hasn't been confirmed yet, but we'll be holding a public meeting about this here at City Hall and at, in Brimerton City Hall and Pauls Post City Hall, in its regards to the vaping products, you know, the vapor products. And the Health Board's recommendation is to put regulations similar to the smoking regulations. There's currently no regulations on these type of products. Retail stores will be required to obtain annual permits. The stores that allow the sampling, their modeling, I believe it's after a Snohomish ordinance. And those establishments will be limited to potentially five, five seats, no personal use. It's going to be product, your sampling product provided by the store. There'll be some HVAC requirements, so that you can't be in a strip mall. And if you are, you have to have your own HVAC system. It can't be a centralized system that circulates the air into neighboring businesses. So that's something for Mr. Bond's department to monitor and force. The existing businesses will be given a year to comply with those air quality requirements. So, like I said, there's going to be three public meetings held throughout the county, you know, about this matter. And as soon as that date is determined, I'll let you know, because it'll be here in the council chambers. I have sent everyone, I believe, an email. Heard from several of you about Senate Bill 611, which is, had to do with sewer services. And we've got a position in favor, and that is the ordinance that, or the Senate bill that, there's a hearings board ruling that says if properties in an urban growth area, it has to be seored. And so this bill would, if you have a functional, functioning sewer system, you don't, you don't have to hook up to it until your system fails.
You mean a septic?
A septic, a functioning septic, yes. I attended, as others of you did, last night, the county commissioners meeting. I testified to our position on the urban growth area. It was a bit of a mixed bag of testimony, depending on, you know, various property owners and, you know, what they wanted to do with their properties. So it was a good meeting. It went pretty late last night. And then I just ask your indulgence here on this item. These council packets take a lot. We have one person that basically puts these paper packets together. And it's a big deal. I know we want to, you know, we have a committee meeting, and we want to rush things, you know, to the dais as soon as we can. But we really, I probably need to, so we had these packets all done. And then the Land Use Committee met, and staff members spent a couple of hours undoing those packets to add an agenda item. So if we can try to refrain from doing that, unless it's really, you know, an emergency, we can add things here at the dais. But I'd really like to avoid taking packets back apart and putting them back together. You know, it ate up a couple of hours of somebody's time. And we just don't have the resources to do that. If we want...
Economic development instead of land use?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. It's economic development, so wrong, wrong culprits. But, I mean, it was a very worthy item we discussed tonight, but it probably could have waited two weeks or been brought up here at the dais if, if we could. If we, everyone wanted to go paperless, we'd have a much bigger window, because then we wouldn't be assembling packets and, you know, taking them apart. But, you know, we can talk about that maybe at the retreat. So, I don't have anything else. Reports of the department heads.
Public Works.
So, back on those agendas. So Friday at 10:00 a.m. roughly, Friday morning is really when we're, when she starts printing paper and putting them into the binders. So if we can get our additions or subtractions to Brandy or Janine by Friday morning, 10 o'clock, then we're really pretty good. So, thank you.
So we get to Friday at 10:00?
No. Sorry.
So today, we have the Decal Pier Phase Two construction bid opening. The bids ranged from $780,000 to $1.1 million. We had nine bids. We will be bringing a contract forward on the 23rd. At that time, we did add a $15,000 line item based on the pre-bid meeting. There was concern, we're not concerned with harbor seals, because they're not part of the mammal, marine mammal watch. But there are stellar lines across the bay. So we did add a lump sum item for construction delays. If a stellar sea line wanders over, and they have to stop construction and send people home. I don't think that's going to happen. So I believe that that lump sum delay probably won't be used. But we, but given what we budgeted, the $815,000, less the construction administration fees, and with the stellar sea lion piece in, if we were to spend that, we're currently about $20,000 short. I'll be requesting next week, or in two weeks, to approve the contract, but also allow an additional $40,000 budget authority if needed. And that's still only 4% of the total project, just in case we run into issues during construction. So I mention that now, just so you can mull it over for the next couple of weeks. But, but again, you know, I, when the first bids were opened, and they were $860,000 and $1.1 million, we finally got a bid, actually from somebody that just did the Waterman Dock, Neptune Marine. And we checked references, the Bard List. They actually did the piling for the Phase One pier abutment of the upland piece. So I feel fairly confident that we have a good contractor. But we will be requesting some additional budget authority, not necessarily have to spend it. But just to have that ability to deal with the construction, because we will be dealing with a window. So, but other than that, you know, that's grant funding. We did put some REIT money into the overall for the construction administration, the actual construction, and then the going and having the bid, the bid documents. We designed it all in 2012, 13. So we had to revise and create a separate standalone bid for the Phase Two. So, but all in all, I'm very excited about this project.
Chair Martin.
Council Finance Committee on the 29th at 7:30 in the morning. And then also, just to follow on, on Mark, I did learn about the bid today and looked. And the add-on money for the city's portion of that project to its real estate excise tax, and the fund is healthy enough, should the council approve it, to add an additional $40,000 to that project.
Mr. Bond.
Yes, for the meeting on the 23rd, we will also have a contract coming forward with Jones &amp; Jones for the McCormick Park Phase Two development. We've had the scope worked out for quite a while, but we've been working on the details of what's going to be required in terms of environmental permitting for the bridge. We've had a, they brought on an extra sub that's going to help with updating some of the existing environmental documents that are, as we learned, more than 10 years old now from the original EIS that was done for the McCormick Woods development. And so the project, the scope and the price came in a little bit high. We had budgeted $125,000 for PSNE, and it's coming in at about $151,500. And if you remember, this, the total project for construction and design was about $785,000 in grant money. Well, the $785,000, half of which was coming from grant money, the other half, which was coming out of our existing McCormick Park Fund, Impact Fee Fund, as well as the Park Impact Fee Fund that's paid by all developers in the city. And so, but based on how the housing market has been lately, we're taking in a lot of park impact fees. And I think we should be able to absorb this, or potentially try to have the engineer design the park to hit a specific target, if, if we can find some efficiencies on some of the improvements that we deliver. However, we do have to deliver all of the things that were in our RCO grant agreement, which was, as you'll remember, a bridge, a boardwalk, playground, picnic shelter, and entry plaza, and a handful of other improvements, and pieces of furniture, and things of that nature. So in any event, that'll be going forward unless there's some objection on price. We'll have that for you at the next meeting.
And I might add that I learned about that this afternoon and looked back on how those funds were arranged. And the $62,500 city portion of that project was from the McCormick Woods Impact Fee received from Kitsap County. And there is remaining about, off the top of my head, I think it was $110,000, should you, the council choose to authorize the additional funding. Thank you.
Ms. Cates, you have a report for us?
I don't have anything to report this week. Thank you.
Okay. That's farther down the agenda. But we do have one. Clerk Reinsen.
So, a couple meetings ago, I had asked the council if they had any concerns with the city clerk's office removing the sponsorship of a council member on an ordinance... the city clerk's office removing the sponsorship of a council member on an ordinance, and at that time, we were in between legal counsel. I have asked our new legal counsel if there's any requirements through the RCWs that require a council member to sign all of our ordinances. She did indicate that there are no requirements through RCWs. However, if the council wishes to have such policy, then you guys are authorized to have a policy. So I guess my question is, is it a standard policy to have a council member sponsor an ordinance and therefore sign it, or do you want to be, just do what the RCW states, which only requires the mayor and the city clerk to sign ordinances?
Well, have we been bitten because we haven't had council member sponsorship? Excuse me?
What was, what was that?
Have we gotten in trouble because we haven't had, or have there been questions about not having council member sponsorship?
No, it was brought forward just for staff reasons to reduce the time. A lot of times when we prepare the packet and we get those ordinances, there isn't a sponsor, and so the department directors have to reach out to the council members individually, ask them if they want to sponsor it, put it on the packet, and then when we get to the council meeting, sometimes the council member is absent, and then we have to go back and change it. So it's more of just trying to streamline the clerk's office processing ordinances.
Thank you.
Mr. Clausen?
Without having much time to think about it, I was wondering if we couldn't just throw this onto the agenda for our retreat, and we have time to debate it then.
It's a wonderful retreat topic. Is that your contribution?
Are you sponsoring it?
Yes.
All right.
And then I just have one last item. I'm sure you guys are aware that my deputy clerk, Rhiannon, has moved on to bigger and better things. She's now the city clerk for the city of Paulsbow. And so, in that transition, I have offered, and she has accepted, Janine Floyd, who has been the city's administrative assistant, too, for the last seven years, is now the city's deputy clerk. And then I am going through application process right now to hire her admin, and we're hoping to get that position filled the first part of March.
Closes tomorrow, correct?
It closes tomorrow. We have about seventy applications. We'll probably get another ten to twenty tomorrow and get them narrowed down and interviewed.
Is Janine in there?
Yes.
She is.
She's hiding.
Take a bow, Janine.
I think we're all delighted to have Janine step into that position. She's been wonderful.
Congratulations.
So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. The only thing I can really say is I just extremely enjoy working at the city. I love who I work with. I love the staff members and the council, and hopefully I can continue to do that. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
She has her own office. And just following up, I have received topics for the retreat from some, but not others, so if you have burning issues that you want to make sure get discussed, please get them to Brandy so that we can put together a good agenda.
And Brandy, just one, one detail. On the agenda, the work-study session is noted as being, starting at seven next week?
Yes, I apologize, I didn't catch that until later on through the night, but yes, it will be starting at six PM. It, the draft agenda has the correct time.
Great, thank you.
Other comments? So we are on to our second citizen comment period. Anyone wish to address the council? Yes, Ms. King?
Mr. Mayor, city council members, I will get in the event permit for the carnival tomorrow, and I don't know how quickly you would review that, but time is of the essence from the standpoint, we have a contract to sign with Butler Amusements should it go through. And I know you have some pencil work to do because of the paid parking that's on the waterfront area where the carnival would be. So I just ask that you keep that in mind, that we have a contract, and they're holding that date tentative for us.
And I can just provide, so when there's a carnival, they have a separate process to go through than the public event application process. So, we have been in contact with, or I should say, the carnival has been in contact with the city. We've provided them the documents that they need to fill out. There is a application fee, processing fee. It does need to be get routed to the departments, and it does require a majority of the council's vote to approve the carnival, so you will get that. And I would assume the soonest we can get that on the agenda, possibly the twenty-third, if I can get everything done by the eighteenth. Otherwise, it'll probably be March eighth.
So, should I instruct the carnival people then to contact you then, Brandy?
Myself or Janine, yes.
Okay, thank you. And congratulations on approving the signs. I think that's an excellent thing. When we send out all of our parade information to all the people coming into Port Archard for the parade, they're now going to be able to see a sign that says "Port Archard." When will they be installed?
Well, there is that.
Soon, okay. Hopefully by the end of June for our parade. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close the citizen comment period. We will be heading into an executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two dash thirty, point thirty, point one-one-oh, potential litigation. I don't believe we're taking any action after that, so how long do you think we need for the executive session?
I would think maybe fifteen minutes would probably be sufficient.
Fifteen minutes then. So they, we'll be back in fifteen minutes to adjourn the meeting, but we will be taking no further, no further action this evening.